First, I would like to thank the board for being here tonight. All of us, Doug, and Craig, as you believe in some gaps that we might have right decisions. And our key is to do the best we can. The part where you do much say, you know, bus drives. Our ideas are to let them all still be school rule. It's he. Thank you very much, Doug, and you will want to have one. So, I'm good.
Please join us in the pledge.
I'm pleased to be with the state of the United States and clarify. And the Republic of which stands one nation under God and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call this work session to order. I need an approval of the agenda, please. Is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, we would like to make one addition, Adam H.
Okay.
Of the wording, Dr. Taylor.
Partnership with Wake Forest University versus Edison in regard to assistance with athletic training.
All right. Any other additions or corrections? Is there a motion to approve? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Next, we have the consent agenda. Approval of the regular session minutes from March 15th.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Next, we have the discussion agenda item A. Discussion of superintendent's budget recommendations, current and capital.
Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, our staff will be presenting the current expense budget recommendation from superintendent and the capital outlay budget recommendation from the superintendent. Just to inform new board members, remind of veteran board members. I'm not going to go new and old. I'm going to go, I caught myself there. Veteran board members, that the superintendent makes a recommendation. The board members will have some time to discuss these budgets. And then they will approve the budget that will go to the county commissioners. The timeline that we're looking at in here is at the May work session is when we would look to approve a budget to go to the county commissioners. It has to be to the commissioners by the middle of that month, by statute, May 15. And so, we will present this tonight. We can discuss it at the April 19 meeting. Discuss it again at the work session in May. But at that work session is when we need to look to have one approved to move forward. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Ms. Moore to start going through the current expense budget.
Kind of, we've laid out how the revenue would look if this particular budget happened to be approved. And as you can go down to the very bottom, you will see this total request is 14 million, 975, 807. That is an increase of a million, 320, 036 from the 2021 budget. Now, what we need to note here is some of our revenue, for example, that fines and forfeitures, we have not budgeted as much income there based on what we're receiving this year. I do feel like COVID has made a difference in our revenue for this year. So, we decreased that from 160,000 to 100. So, that's 60,000 less. That means has to come from another fund source. Our interest is down 3,500, and then our rent down was 49. And the other big factor is, at this time, we've not included any fund balance. But as we have discussion, that's something that the board can decide if they want to do. But with that in mind, that pushes the increase more into county appropriations. For example, if you were to prove it as we have it here. So, that would mean even though our budget is only a million, 320, there would be more an additional increase in county funding because these other revenues have decreased. So, with that in mind, it would be a million, 736, 936 additional increase in the county appropriations. So, again, a 14 million, 975, 807 at this time. You'll go over to your next page. I've reflected the increases and decreases by category. And by that, we've compared the 2021 to our estimated request for the 2122 school year. And you can go down each one, and some of them are minus. When we see we can actually cut line items, Dr. Rice agrees that that's what we need to do. So, you will see some things in the red, so to reflect what we actually think will happen. I will not go through each one of them because I know you can read those. On the next page, you will see our new request listed, not in priority order, and the amount of increase for each one of those. We'll talk a little bit more about those in just a minute. From there, we will go to page one, and that's where we start the detail. Especially for the new board members, this sells out a lot of detail for you all to see exactly what we are requesting in this budget. So, we start out with our salaries, and they're all listed there. Go ahead. Salaries continue on page two. Also, on page three. And if you go over to, on page three, you'll see the total request for the salaries is 5 million, 415, 921. And we included a pie chart also in your handout. And you can see that most of our percentage there is in salaries and benefits. That's the largest amount of our request. Then, when you have salaries, you have to have your benefits included. So, on page four, you will see the breakdown of our benefits from social security, retirement, unemployment. That's 2 million, 335, 243. So, between the salaries and benefits, it's 7 million, 751, 164. Page five, where you see the blue, new request, again, not in priority order. I will go through these. Number one, two instructional coach positions. If Dr. Rice, if you want to make any comments about any of these as we go, feel free to.
Just as, just as a reminder, and again, information for the newer board members, in the past, we had these two positions. We cut them previously to try to balance the budget as we had resignations. But we are asking those two positions to be restored.
Okay. Two, technology engineering positions.
As some of y'all were in the focus groups for digital learning, the need for technology assistance was brought up numerous times. Ms. Barker can vouch for that, as well as all of our media assistants, that as we, we have the same amount of technology help today with 6,000 devices, almost 8,000 devices, as we did five years ago when we had 400 Chromebooks and some desktops at each school. So, we have increased our technology significantly without increasing our support. So, this is asking to support the technology that we have.
Okay. On page six, the next new request would be 11 media assistant positions.
Again, that's along those same lines of technology support to say, I asked Ms. Barker to look at where we could, how many technology people could we hire as media assistants to help with Chromebook repairs? And again, although I know we have 19 schools, we were not asking for 19 media assistant positions. We were looking at sharing some between some of our smaller schools, but believe that 11 media assistant positions would be beneficial to help with our Chromebook upkeep.
And then our next item, number four, was one maintenance position.
Again, this is one that we asked for last year. Mr. Goins, would you like to speak to that?
And then the last request was a public information marketing position or possibly a contract service.
In that position, as the board has talked about a lot in the last couple of years, about the need to market our schools, Ms. Jessup is a part-time public information officer. Basically, with her other duties as HR, she updates the Facebook here and there and handles media requests as it comes in. But as far as, there is no one here on staff that is a true marketing person, and again, wearing many hats. So, what we looked at, if the board wishes to proceed with a marketing plan, and I know we'll have an update on that later, in putting in the budget, a half-time position to work with the schools with marketing potentially. So, again, and then the last thing on the page seven is high school athletic trainers. Again, I brought this to the board last year. As we have athletic needs and injuries and the potential of safety issues that could come with that, looking at three athletic trainers, that contracted service. I know the board had received some emails about that as well, and I wanted to, if nothing else, show the board what that line item cost would be to have the three full-time people in the partnership with Wake Forest University. When we investigated that last year, that was the line item cost with that as well. So, I wanted you to be aware of what a need like that would cost to finish. As we said before, and as we'll say again, these are the needs that have been brought to me that have made it this far into the budget process, fully understanding that the board will potentially make cuts in here, add to, take away. At the end of the day, it will be y'all's budget that will go to the county commissioner. But these are needs that have been brought to me that I'm sharing with you and what the line items would cost.
And those total new requests comes to 961,916. So, that's what your total request would be for those. On page eight, we've broken it down by technology, and our total technology request is 699,663. And you can see the breakdown of the different items and what all that's for. Page nine, our travel. We go at the IRS rate per mile and supplies and materials, non-capitalized equipment, the instructional supplies, that's allotted out to our schools. We did do an allotment for some media books and supplies this year, and that's why it's not in a new request, and we want to continue that of the 20,000. You can come on down and see the different line items that we're asking for, supplies and materials. And that comes to 323, 675. On page 10, you have contracted services. And again, here on your resource officers, we are hoping, again, not to have to include money here in our local budget if our state planning allotments will allow for that to come out of our at-risk money. So, that will be something we'll know more definite when we meet again. We are including the matching grant for the resource officers of the 77, 988. Just to make you aware, when you see the zero there, that doesn't mean that we're doing away with anything. Hopefully, it will be paid from state funds. You have the maintenance departments, just our general repairs there. Page 11, again, we're continuing with contracted services. And you can see our audit where we do our custodial supplies. Again, you all can read through that, and we can discuss that more in detail. On page 12, we did include, I know that Dr. Rice discussed with the board of adding money into the schools to go out for officials and the gas cost due to what the schools were losing due to the COVID. And we've included that 75,000 in this budget at this time. Staff development, maintaining that, our advertising, printing, and leasing. Right now, we are looking at doing away with the leasing this parking lot back here. Hopefully, with the space we have here on the side, it's not being used that much. So, Dr. Rice is proposing that maybe we can save that much money there. On page 13, that's the dues where we pay for school board, the dues for our superintendent directors to the NCA SA consortium. And also, we have accreditation money there. One item here, insurance. You can see that there is some increase here. The liability insurance, up to 125,000. Our property is up to 120. Really, we paid more than 105 this year because we changed the way we had our coverage. So, really, we're not expending that much more. We just had to budget it to cover it. They're saying that on liability, that there's a lot that increased that probably will be in part of our technology coverage there because there's so much happening in that area. So, that's 335, 709 if you include Poplar Springs. And I will need to tell the new board members, if you will see in yellow, Poplar Springs, when the county commissioners approve the funding for Poplar Springs, that comes in for a separate allocation. So, when we make our request, we have to pull those items out for like their property insurance, their technology, water, sewer, and electrical. And you'll see those items highlighted in yellow as you go through. Page 14, communications, which will include our phone services. You've got postage. Utilities is always a biggie in this budget. You can see, basically, we have tried to maintain. This year, of course, we'll have some savings there due to the fact that we've not been in full force all year long at the school level. So, in utilities, there's 2 million, 625,500. And page 15, you'll see that separate line item for Poplar Springs as I discussed. Operations, here we go with our gas and oil for all of our county vehicles. And I know you've had some discussion of the amount that we have to spend to cover yellow buses, and we have lessened that but to 300,000. Repairs to all schools, 345. So, the operations is 770,000. Charter schools, it's a slight increase. What we have to do there is to take our ADM and the amount of funding that we receive from the county, including our fines, and give them a prorated amount. So, right now, you can see we've estimated, based on basically way it is this year, 132 students would get 2,401. And then we have some virtual and the NC Fiber Academy that just get the flat 790 per student. So, we put 335, 892 in for charter schools, which we have no control over. So, then page 16 comes back to your 14 million, 975, 807. Now, you'll go back to your pie chart. As you go through the individual line items, the pie chart will probably make more sense to you because you can see salary and benefits. Then you can go to the individual pages and see what makes up 52% of that. You can go to utilities and see what makes up 18%. Our new request, 6%, and you can come on around. So, this pie chart is set up according to the categories in each page. Any questions, Dr. Rice? Anything you want to add?
Just one other thing I would like to add is, again, just a reminder, the budget process in North Carolina is backwards, if you will. The one that we have the most influence on, if you will, is our local budget from our county commissioners, where we know those people, can talk to them, and advocate for our needs. But the state budget, well, it wasn't approved the last two years. So, we still don't have an approved state budget from two years now. And so, when we're projecting things out, it's a guess in some ways. Where, you know, we've heard the governor's proposed budget and what he is proposing for teacher raises. But until the House and the Senate vote and they come to an agreement, we really don't know what to put into our budget for salary increases, how that will affect our supplements. But we are waiting patiently, impatiently, to hear what the state budget is. The federal budgets are estimates that we'll usually get around October in that ballpark. So, the big portions of our money come later in the year, and we're, so we have to do a lot of estimating. I know which makes Ms. Moore very nervous, but she's very good at doing the estimation through a lot of years of experience. But again, it is an estimation where we try to protect ourselves from things that we hear and see. But to be honest, we don't hear and see a whole lot anymore right now. The governor has put his out. I've not heard anything from the House or the Senate yet, and very few projections from DPI at this point. So, the budget process is kind of backwards. And so, where you see salary increases, it was estimated a 5% increase, which again, is around what the governor ended up saying. Again, commend Ms. Moore for predicting that correctly. But until the House and the Senate agree to something, we don't know what that will be. But, so some of these numbers are projections.
We did include 5%. We moved the certified staff up on the step and included 5%. For the classified, as the board approved last year for people to go up a step, we increased them a step, and we figured 3%. So, we've heard somebody there might be a bonus. So, if there's no increase, so that part of increase would go toward the bonus if that's the case. So, that's just where we're at with that at this time. But like Dr. Rice said, that is subject to change as we hear more. Any questions at this time?
I wanted to ask, are we still paying for the parking?
Yes, ma'am. We mentioned that to the county, but we were told that we would need to pick that up with our funding. So, we have been doing that. Yes, ma'am.
You were told that.
From the county that we should use our own funding for that.
Are we the only county entity that has to pay for parking?
I can't answer that.
I can't answer that.
I don't know.
But again, just to catch everybody up, when we have the parking on the street, and we park behind the buildings on the other side, well, that is private property. And a couple of years ago, they started charging us rent. We went to the county commissioners to ask them for that funding to pay that rent, and they said no. The parking lot now is finished behind the Arts Place, and they have finished some on this side. So, that would be the parking that we would utilize for principal meetings or board meetings in the future. But they just finished this on this side, so we have been paying for that this year.
And that's behind the building?
Correct. Now, the street parking is all just street parking, but that parking lot behind the building was private property, and we had to pay for that.
And we do not have to pay the town of Danbury for parking around the building. That's no cost to us.
Did we say that we probably won't have that expense this coming year?
Correct. Well, now that this side parking is finished and the parking lot behind the Arts Place is finished, we believe there's enough for daily parking here and in our special events. They would have to walk across the street, but there is parking there available that is free.
Any other questions? All right. Any other questions, board, for Ms. Moore? No? Thank you.
And feel free to contact me as you look through it, or Dr. Rice, if you have questions.
Over the next couple of weeks, if you have any questions, please let Ms. Moore and myself know, and we will discuss this again at the April 19 meeting. If you have further questions after digesting it, and then we'll need to start making board recommendations, again, for that approval at that first meeting in May. The next budget is the capital outlay budget. I'll turn it over to Mr. Goins to go over that one.
Yes, board members, in your packet, you should have the items to Stokes County Schools, 2021, 2022 capital funding request. It has the request and the justification. What Mr. Rhodes is passing out is a summary of the two requests we're going to talk about. Just briefly going down that. We also list them in a priority order, and again, these are subject to change depending on whatever the board would like. First one's emergencies for the schoolwide. The next one is the fall protection. That's what we put in for our elementary schools every year. The roofs for North Stokes on Autotech and then Piney Grove, the roof for the gym and cafeteria. The rest of these justifications, if it's for a school, typically, it's what my principal asks, unless it's something for a maintenance request, like a burner and things like that. At the central office, we're looking at replacing the, doing smart board upgrades. We're only asking for 25% of that, which was the 260,000. We're looking, doing that over a four-year plan. Next one is the hardwood for the gym floors. That's just to maintain the gym floors at middle and high schools. Looking for a burner at Mount Olive Elementary. New heating system in F Building at South Stokes. It has what they call perimeter heat. It's really never worked right in the past few years. We're going to look at doing something different there. Child nutrition, we want to put a monitoring system at their walk-in coolers and freezers. This will, Randolph County Schools uses this. It monitors the temperature on the cooler freezers. If it drops below a set point, you can put it in for, if it hits that set point for so many minutes, it has a call list that starts calling people, lets you know the temperature has dropped for whatever reason. Number 10 is two maintenance vehicles. 11 is to replace the fire alarm at Piney Grove Middle School. 12 is to replace the freezer at South Stokes High School. On the next page, it's air conditioning, the Autotech can petition off a classroom for students. Currently, that class was using a room, but that's going to have to come to Fire Academy at South Stokes. They would have to have their classroom now actually inside the shop area of the Autotech. This would go in and portion off a section of that, put a drop ceiling in it, and add air conditioning. Germantown Elementary School, looking, that's to replace, upgrade their phone system and put a phone in every classroom. Number 15, that's at Pinnacle Elementary School. Has changed the outside locks to signature locks to match, so it'd be consistent with the inside locks. 16 is upgrade for Meadowbrook, their electronic door access. They had one of the first door accesses we ever had, and it's just obsolete now. So, we'd be looking at upgrading that to what our school's currently used. Chestnut Grove, they need two, three desktops to run their new camera system. London Elementary, that's supposed to be paint, that's supposed to be classroom three, not paint three classrooms. It's the pre-K classroom. It was written up on their inspection for having peeling paint. Mount Olive Elementary Schools, paint the Head Start classroom. Again, that was written up on their inspection. Number 20, King Elementary Schools, we need to paint five EC rooms. That was written up on their inspection as well for peeling paint. West Stokes High School, replaced the lighting in both gyms with LED. I feel like we can pay for that in a few years, just in the money we're going to save in energy. 21 is the transportation, convert a yellow bus for activity bus for Piney Grove. On down, transportation, convert a yellow bus to activity for Chestnut Grove, and then 24, convert a yellow bus for West Stokes.
Sure.
How are we going to watch schools getting into like? Do we get that?
Based on the age of the place. Piney Grove, they got a 95. They made you five models.
They have to get some 98s to be replaced. It was brought to the board this weekend, the 95, so it's out there. Going with the 98s, 200.
Well, the one that, the other two, the one at West, it was because the bus that we replaced, there was an issue with it, and we had to put an old bus back in and replace. So, we wanted to break down. I mean, we really could look at a lot more, a lot more upgrade. That's, we're trying to be concerned.
I mean, the two that were replaced in 98s, that's right. Who are your thoughts?
We're just looking at the overall condition of the bus.
Okay.
So, that, it's not just the age or the miles, it's the overall condition. We're trying to look at the usage and make decisions based on the store bus that will be here for South, Southeastern, South Capitulation. Then when you drive the cars to drive the vehicles that run. Yeah. The one at Southeastern?
Yeah, the one at Southeastern, the one at South.
Yeah, it's still.
But normal, normal engine, if you run it, they could make one.
Correct. They still run in the Florida. Well, they haven't used many buses.
Ready to move on?
Yes, sir, Mr. Goins.
Number 25, this is a new computer fuel management system. The current one has issues, and some of the parts, I think, is getting out, is out of date and hard to find. Piney Grove Middle School, this has been, they've requested this in the past. We're working the front area walkway so that the drainage, so that keep the water off the sidewalk. Number 27 is London Elementary. It should have been renovate restrooms by cafeteria. It should have been renovate restrooms by cafeteria. Twenty-eight is cafeteria tables, uh, for child nutrition. Twenty-nine is the track replacement at, uh, North Stokes High School. Thirty, it says H V A C upgrades. We would look at that as just something to look at, start looking at some of our older equipment, possibly getting an engineer involved to see, uh, which, and start replacing some of this oldest equipment. Uh, Germantown Elementary School's thirty-one, asked to replace the shingles on the picnic shelter and garage. That's been asked for for several years. Then thirty-two is Mount Olive, replace the carpet with B C in the front office, teachers' lounge and workrooms. Uh, London Elementary School, uh, replace areas, uh, needed, carpeted areas need to be replaced. That's kind of the back, that's the old E C wing of the, uh, London Elementary. Thirty-four is Meadowbrook, uh, carpeting offices in the main building. And Pinnacle Elementary School, replace carpet in the main office suite. And the central office, uh, that's replaced carpet in finance. It does have some torn places. And then the last one is Nancy Reynolds, that's fixed the drainage on the playground area and the parking lot. Comes up to two point, uh, one, ten, six hundred. Are there any questions?
Twenty-nine, North Stokes, correct. Does South Stokes, was last year?
Well, last year we did West Stokes. Was going to ask for one this year and then another one for next year. South, South Stokes is going to be about six hundred thousand to do it because we have to take the trees down. You can probably put them both in a, in a sack and pull one out.
I can make those one this.
Well, we just felt like we'd do one this year and one next year.
Well, we had roofs at North this year. We did the gym floor at South last year, so we were looking at, we did an athletic upgrade at South this year, and then so North would be next year, and then South would be back the next year. So we're, they were both similar, so we kind of tried to look at who got the most recent athletic upgrade.
I'm looking at where this was the worst first.
And again, they're roughly the same.
They're, they're roughly the same. They both have issues. Are there any questions?
On the smart board upgrades, that's two hundred and sixty thousand times four, or you want like two sixty?
For four years.
For four years, each year for four years?
That's correct.
Or just two sixty to be vided up for four years?
It's two sixty for four years. It's one million forty thousand total.
Which number item? I'm sorry.
Number five.
I have a little question. Um, where it said, oh, go ahead. No, no.
I'm good, I'm good.
I think it was over a million dollars.
There is one of these, oh, it says written up on health inspection report. So, so the health inspector goes around and looks and inspects, and they say that this has to be replaced, paint.
Which number? I'm sorry.
Twenty, twenty.
I can't hear whether the air conditioner running.
I know, in the math.
Yes, well, actually, pre-K, they have, uh, they have their own inspectors that come around and inspect pre-K. The health department will inspect it, then they have pre-K inspectors from the state that comes up and inspect those areas.
Well, that's what I thought. So the inspector has said that, um, they need to be painted.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And actually, the annex building at King Elementary, they said the interior and exterior need to be painted. Well, I got a price on, we went ahead and took care of that out of, uh, this year, and instead of painting the exterior, we just covered it in vinyl. So we don't have to paint it again, so.
What number is it for the interior?
For King Elementary?
Uh-huh.
Ten thousand dollars.
To paint the interior?
Yes, ma'am. Just for King only, that's for King, that's for the annex building only.
Okay, well, how, how old is that building? I mean, when was the last time that thing was painted?
I couldn't tell you the last time it was painted. It just had some peeling paint, chip walls that they said need to be, need to be repaired.
Okay. And so is that the only ones where inspections have been where you can see?
No, ma'am. Uh, there was number twenty for King, uh, nineteen, uh, Mount Olive Elementary, their head start, and also classroom number three at, uh, London Elementary.
So nineteen, twenty, and number three?
Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Okay, eighteen, nineteen, okay. So we better pay attention to those. They're not that expensive, but.
No, ma'am.
I got a question. The board says paint is peeling. Is that lead paint that's peeling or?
It has been painted. We, uh, assume anything after, if a building's nineteen seventy-eight or older, it has potential to be lead paint, and you have to have a lead renovator certification to paint in those buildings. If it's elementary school, if it's middle and high school, then you don't.
All right. And, uh, Mount Olive and, uh, King Elementary, were they, uh, I'm sure King Elementary was what you said.
King Elementary, Mount Olive, and, uh, London are all that age or older.
Okay.
Well, that building was sitting there, the annex building, King Elementary was sitting there in nineteen seventy-two when I joined King Elementary.
It was probably built in the six, late fifties, early sixties.
Yeah.
That was a student then. No, she wasn't teaching in seventy.
I was young then.
She have a question, Mr. Robertson?
Yes, uh, the track over at West Stokes, uh, are you aware of any problems with the track over there, standing water back in the, uh, back on one of the turns or on the, uh, at the bottom of that hill?
Now, there was an issue with the drainage, some water coming off onto the track along the, uh, fieldhouse end.
Right.
But it was, it was coming off the track because we put additional drainage and swells in along that end to take care of the water.
But I mean, are you aware of any problems since it's been re, since we've resurfaced it?
No.
Because I was there for a game a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, and, uh, I think it was Mr. Mabe or, uh, Mr. Gammons wanting to tell me that there was some water still standing over in that corner.
I have a minute holdout. We discussed the water running across, coming off the bank, running across the track.
Yeah. Well, I, I, you know.
I can look into that.
I know that, and that was before I was on the board, but I know there's a lot of money spent on that track, and, uh, and if there's, uh, still a drainage issue, I think we need to check into it.
Oh, yes.
And it looks like to me the people did the work or to come back and fix it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because it's under warranty.
Right. But, uh, but they were talking about that, that there's still water standing on the track, running across it, whatever, uh, we don't want really any of that to happen.
Well, there's really no way to address the water running across the track, coming off the fieldhouse. It's just the way the land lays. We looked at that during, was going to have to dig up the parking lot, uh, that's coming in by the track to put any drainage off of that, just didn't really have the funding for that. And we felt like rains, water runs across the track anyways, what the engineer said. We didn't feel like that would be an issue, as long as it ran across the track and didn't stand on the track.
I didn't walk around and look at it, but, uh, they, they, from what I gathered from them, it seemed like there was still a problem with it. And I'd like to maybe go over and address it and, uh, make sure we don't have water standing. We don't want the, the track to delaminate, uh, like it did last time or have problems with it.
Oh, absolutely.
We appreciate you letting us know because we've not been made aware of that, but we'll certainly check into it, and I believe it's supposed to rain Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
So we can check into it. So thank you for letting us know.
I'll look into that.
And these are in priority order, right? Where you think that number one should be, just going on down the road?
Again, this is superintendent's recommendations to the board. The board can change it any, any way they please. These are our recommendations, superintendent's recommendations.
Oh, okay. I just need a moment.
Okay, if there's no more questions, if you look at the, there's one that says Stokes County Schools Fund Balance Leftover Money Project Requests, uh, from twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. These are projects that was also requested in capital this year from schools. Uh, we had some fund balance left over on some of the roofs, uh, and things of that nature. We would like to ask the board to go ahead and approve this tonight to see if we could take this hundred and forty-four thousand dollars and go ahead and do these projects now, uh, and get this started. The first one is Papa Springs Elementary School is a mower. Again, he wrote this, the justification, he originally asked for a, uh, a tractor with a front end loader, a front end loader with a mowing deck. We priced that, it came in at about twenty-two-five. I had a conversation with him and just said hypothetically, if you get thirteen thousand dollars for a lawnmower, would you be willing for the school to pay the other ninety-five hundred to get you a tractor like you want? And he said no. So we went back and changed that just to a zero-turn mower.
What was the justification for the front end loader?
He said it'd be nice to have. He said he brings his over when they need it. Mark's brought his over when they need it. But I told him if he was looking, I said, what are you going to use it more for, mowing or front end loader? He said mowing. I said, well, this zero turn will most circles around a tractor with a, with a belly mower. And I said, if you're going to use it for mowing, you need a zero-turn mower. So he agreed to that. Again, Southeastern requested a zero-turn mower. Pine Hall, they have an area there on their playground where it's like, it used to be the pre-K playground and their existing playground. It's fences between them. We just want to take some fence down there and make that, which is like one playground. And then, uh, several schools asked for onings. Pinnacle Elementary just want one outside their gym. Pine Hall is wanting one coming in their front door. Meadowbrook wants to cover the walkway on the middle school side of the pod. Uh, Chestnut Grove asked for one out front that would be coming out both doors, uh, and joining those together. Uh, and then Lawsonville Elementary, that's the only thing he requested was a gate. He said the law enforcement recommends he had a gate where nobody could drive around behind his building. And then the carpet at Piney Grove Media Center, that's been asked for for several years, and also the carpet at, uh, at Walnut Cove, and that comes to one, one four, one hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Are there any questions on those?
At Pine Hall, the opening between the fence, uh, I noticed the tree is falling down, taking out part of the fence on the ball field, too.
Yes. Um, there was, what she recommended there was just taking that fence down because nobody uses the ball field anymore.
Okay.
And I was going to have another contractor look at just coming in and cleaning that up, filling the holes up and reseating it.
Okay. I just curious.
We discussed that one around at our budget meetings.
Use part of this to fix that or whatever.
Well, we could, but I was just, I was going to take some of our, of our current money to do that, our repair money.
This, uh, fund balance that, uh, this monies are coming out of, is that, does that take that balance down to, how much would be left in the balance, in the fund balance after this?
Based on where we were as of March eleventh, when we went through all the projects, uh, that we had completed in the twenty twenty-one capital outlay budget, we actually had three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Now, with that, I will go ahead and say, we had a hundred thousand budgeted for emergencies, and we've used forty-seven of that. So we've left the fifty-two out there to be able to use still for emergencies. So three twenty-eight, two seventy-eight, fourteen. When we finished June thirtieth of twenty, after we had carryover projects that we brought forward, there was a hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars left. So between the two years, we had four hundred and forty-three thousand, sixty-five dollars and fourteen cents that we had not designated for particular projects. So then that much would come off of what Mr. Goins has recommended to you all here.
So what was that total again for?
The total is four hundred and forty-three thousand, oh, sixty-five.
So if we do this, we're going to have three hundred thousand plus. We had two roofing projects come in. Considerable.
That's included.
That's included. Okay.
The only concern that Ricky had, the Nancy Reynolds roofing is.
The Nancy Reynolds roof?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
The Nancy Reynolds roof, the D P I engineer can't do that project this year. So I've reached out to Jerry Wolffield, who has done roofing projects for us in the past. He's supposed to be getting me a proposal to what, uh, his service would be to do the roofing project at Nancy Reynolds.
That can't come out of that endowment?
The endowment committee, they kind of look at that as their, if we're doing anything else for another school, like a roof or something, then they feel like that they should get the same thing, and they choose how they spend their money. That's just the way it's written up, correct, Lynette?
So the, uh.
That could come out of it if they chose to ask for it, right?
Technically, yes, ma'am. Uh, they choose how to spend their money.
Yes.
So I guess, uh, we approved the one forty-four, five, and we're left with roughly three hundred. Is that, uh, with the monies that's not spent, does that just carry over to the next year?
Yes, sir. And the budget priorities that we've asked for are two million, one hundred and ten thousand, six hundred dollars. The last couple of years, we've gotten one point seven, uh, one million, seven hundred thousand dollars from the commissioners, so this could go into this list as well if, 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 depending on how the final numbers come in to help finish out these projects. Or again, if the board has other priorities, we can strike some of these and move in a different direction. But the thoughts were, uh, again, with the leftover money that we've had in the savings, uh, from some projects, the, the ten items that Mr. Goins went through either deal with immediate needs like lawn mowers at that, you know, or we could wait till July, but mowing season is now. And also, when we've talked about roof onings, uh, again, we, some very good points been made this year about we've stuck computers on everybody and they're standing outside in the rain. And so people have requested onings for that. We, we've looked at that, as well as a couple of carpet projects that have gotten bumped because of budgets for years that are in, in bad shape.
But onings, if we wait until July.
Right.
To award a contract, then you've got your materials order delivered, so it's just pushing everything far and back. So if we can get those on now, they'll get done quickly.
Madam Chair, I'm making a motion that we move the Stokes County Schools Fund Balance Leftover Money Projects to action for tonight.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor of moving these items to action, say a.
Uh.
Any opposed?
I do have one question, though, about the Lawsonville Elementary driveway gate. Where exactly is that going to be? It's going to be right there at the top of the hill.
It's going to be between, it's going to be between the community building.
And the school.
And the school, but it'd be past the community building, so they can still have access to community building, picnic shelter, just around, kind of on that corner where they can't go around the school.
That's what I was wanting to know, make sure we didn't knock them out of.
No, we wouldn't do that.
Um, I wanted to ask this, the lawnmower that's eight years old, will that be sent to another school that needs it?
That was.
From Papa Springs?
Papa Springs? No, he was actually wanting to keep that mower as well, so he would have two mowers.
Do most elementary schools have two mowers?
Well, this one's got some age on it, and he's having to do some repairs and try to keep one mower running at all time.
Thank you.
But the new, the new mower better be running.
Yes. And we'd look at getting those, uh, getting Bobcat mowers again on those.
Have we looked at all the brands out there?
Sir?
Have we looked at all the lawnmower brands out there recently?
No, we've just bought Bobcat the last several years. We've had good experience with those. Uh, the new mowers, Bobcats, uh, this year we'd look at, they've got three years, two thousand hours bumper-to-bumper warranty.
Uh, Bobcat just changed ownership, so.
Well.
Ownership and production facility, so.
Yes, they went from the lawnmower divisions to become part of the equipment division. Uh, they're going to be the white and red, uh.
Some of them are made in states.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm just suggesting that perhaps we look at everybody, just. I know about five years ago, on my first tour, we had like an open, a field day.
Mm-hmm.
And everybody came and brought theirs. I don't know if we want to do that again since we're starting to buy more lawnmowers again.
Well, the, the board.
Just allow the, the vendors and the community to come together and decide what is best.
Okay.
I mean, that's just a suggestion. Never know what's out there until you look.
That's true. That's true. Well, in two weeks, I'm going to be out of work in about eight, for eight weeks. I might have to have shoulder surgery, so I was trying to get some of this done before I could not just dump all that on Richie when I go out. You probably have that on your board report tonight.
Yeah, it's on there. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But I'd hate to think we've rushed twenty-six thousand dollars worth of expenditures. Surely we've got somebody other than you that could facilitate this research in lawnmower.
True.
I mean, I'm just asking. We're a pretty good-sized unit here. Dr. Rice, Dr. Dowd, do we have somebody else that can just look and make sure that we're doing the right thing?
Richie and I can look into that.
Yeah. I mean, I know Huska Barnum, I've got a Bobcat, it'd be great. But I know Huska Barnum looks good, simplistic, some of those other ones.
Okay.
Let us know. Shoot us an email if something changes or what you find out, okay?
What do the Bobcats, where do we buy them?
Well, typically, I bid those out with Manor Saw and Mower, Scythe Mower Works, Dunlapse, and and I'll be honest, I've already got the bids on the mowers. I want to head and bid those out to try to speed the process up. And we bid it out with Piedmont Bobcat.
Those are commercial-grade mowers.
These are commercial-grade mowers. It's just top-of-the-line Bobcat. But I'll look into other mowers.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just curious. Plus, if we could buy in Stokes County, if they have lots.
Yeah, I mean, um...
He didn't even bid on them.
Who did?
The local dealer for Bobcat didn't bid on them this year.
Well, I have one more lately, but that's the reason I'm saying maybe there's another brand out there that we would get better service from Stokes County.
From a local individual business, yeah.
Okay. And last but not least, board members, you have additional capital projects from 2021, 2022. That was on your list. That was the other items that principals asked for. I won't go through that list. You can look over that and the cost of those as well.
Uh, Board, before we go, I know we had a first and a second about moving that. Did we vote on that?
Yes.
We did? Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, okay. Yeah, yeah, the additional projects are not included. That was just additional projects they requested. It's not included in the budget.
And just again, as a reminder or education, we asked the administration, what are your top three needs? And then the maintenance also went in and looked at the bones of needs in the building, and the total came up to six, a little over six million dollars.
Six point four million was the total, but that included all the smart boards.
And so, you know, we pared that down to a two-point-one million dollar request as well as the additional items that you've moved to action tonight.
Any other questions?
Roofing priority?
Oh, yes. Yes, I'm sorry. And you should have on your list about the roofing priorities, the top ten in roofing priorities? I do apologize. I'm thinking, Lynette. As you can see, we've asked for the top three, which is North Stokes Auto Tech, Pine Grove Cafeteria, and Pine Grove Gym. That's the three we're asking for this year. We just asked for Pine Grove in one line item. And then that's the rest of our roofing projects. Top ten.
Will that take care of all the roofing needs at North Stokes?
No, because you still have the field house on here at North Stokes.
Okay.
Did we cover the additional capital budget projects?
I just told you about it. We didn't go through, I didn't go through those one by one. That's just the additional projects that they requested.
But again, in the next couple of weeks, if there's something, as you look through those, you feel that that's a bigger priority than what we've listed, the board has the right to readjust that list, take anything off the list that we've presented tonight as the recommendation, and replace it with anything else that's on these other requested items.
We don't have to take it off, but we don't have to take anything off. I always add to it.
You can always add to it. We've tried to stick around the budget number that we've been getting, but that would not prevent the commissioners from giving us more.
It looks like to me that our list keeps growing.
It does.
And our monies, you know, the amount of repairs that we need keeps going up, and it seems like it's going to be hard to ever get to the end of that list if we don't if we don't try to tackle a few more things on the list.
Couple of years ago, when I first came here, I rode around with Mr. Burge and Mr. Goins, and we went around to every facility and talked about needs. Uh, again, that's been five years ago now, but it was thirty, forty million dollars in needs. And again, we're getting around two a year. That's, and that's not even counting activity buses that are, that if you replace those at a hundred thousand dollars each, that's a lot more money. And so, yeah, there's lots of needs. Um, and the list does grow each year.
Mr. Robertson? At two-point-one million, that's still seven times what we were getting five, six years ago. So that's what we're paying. Now, that's the reason the list kept growing and growing. We weren't, we were getting three and three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for capital.
In capital.
That was it.
It was unbelievable.
We weren't even able to do any roofs, because at one time, we give the principals, we had, we give them five items in three different categories, which was fifteen. And like Dr. Rice said, we was getting thirty, forty, fifty million dollars worth of capital request and getting three, four, five hundred thousand dollars in capital funding. So we narrowed it down to three requests per school and still getting six point four, six point one to six point four consistently about every year, and we're getting one point five to one point seven, eight million dollars a year in funding.
And again, the tax money, sales tax money that comes in funds the capital. That money can be used for capital needs or paying off debt. And back in those years where you were getting three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, they were taking a million or more to pay off debt at that time to try to free up money in the future. Now, we still have debt, and theoretically, in nine years, when all that's paid off, there would be a lot more capital money. But again, that's nine years in the future. And then at that point, our buildings are nine years old. Uh, and again, you think about the repairs that go on in your house in a nine-year period and realize that these houses hold eight hundred people, and they're expensive.
The other thing is there's the four-cent school tax, of which we get two and three-quarters cent, but the other portion goes for scit tech for the Metis campus, which we don't get. So when people tell us, uh, four-cent tax, you're getting it up, no, we're not getting it up. We're getting just a little over sixty percent of that. Trying to maintain nineteen schools, of, a third of which were high schools back in the fifties?
Early sixties, north and south.
Well, I'm talking about the Sandy Ridge, Lawsonville, the ones that were originally core high schools. Uh, the only thing I have, if you would, just send me the model number for the Bobcat. Uh, follow him up here, Hayden, tonight. I'll just figure out what's, you know, comparable. I don't want another price because I don't want anybody to think I did something. Just curious. See if there's another brand out there that's comparable. I don't know.
Any other questions? Thank you, board members.
No, sir. Thank you. Next, we have discussion of handbook review process.
Hello, board members. I just kind of wanted to go over with you the process that we have been typically undergoing to make our revisions for the handbook and walk you through that. Since we are in the final quarter of this school year, I want to go ahead and get that on the radar. One of the first things that I do is I send out an email to all of the directors just so I can find out anything that has changed within their program areas, such as nutrition, transportation, curriculum, et cetera. And they will send in those revisions. A lot of that is legal-based, so we do have to go ahead and just make those modifications as they are listed. The next item that I do is I send an email to all of our principals and ask them to meet with their faculty members and ask for any recommendations that they may have, run that through their sit team, and then get those recommendations to me. And then, in the past, I've put together a committee that was representative of all parts of our county and all grade spans. And we would discuss those recommendations that I had received to see which ones may fit within the handbook and which ones maybe we did not need to consider. And then I would bring a final copy back to the board after we had gone through and updated all the personnel, updated the forms to make sure that they had the correct dates, and added in any of the recommendations from the committee to bring you all a final copy over the summer. So that's the process that we have typically used. We did a very extensive redraft in eighteen nineteen. Um, last year, I'd only received about eight recommendations. Just seeing other a couple that come up each year, and when I bring that forward to all of our principals, they say, no, we've covered that. You know, I think what we have is good. And that, one of those is with our dress code. That typically comes up very regularly. And they have said, no, I like the diagram that we have now. It is just specific enough. I'm not trying to measure distance or measuring the length of straps, et cetera. Um, so, you know, there are some things like that that the principals will give us very clear feedback on that, no, I like where we have taken that. Um, but anyway, that is the process, and I'd like to go ahead and get that email out to our principals and get rolling with this tomorrow. Do you all have questions for me on how we've typically done that in the past, or any suggestions that you would like to see me carry out? Also, in the document, I did share with you a copy of our handbook. It's a PDF. So if you have recommendations that you would like for me to send to the panel, I'd be glad to do that as well.
I'm good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have discussion of Policy Series Three Thousand.
Madam Chair, members of the board, in your packet is a spreadsheet chart of the changes for the Three Thousand series that's recommended by the School Board Association. We've shared the documents with you in the Google Drive back a couple of weeks ago. Uh, at this point, are there any questions that you have about any of these for Mr. Johnson or myself, or any that would like to pull out at a later time for discussion, or any that you would like to discuss this evening?
Um, can you send us the PDF that breaks it down a little further, you know, gives us more information? Do you have a PDF? It kind of bundles all these together and lists them maybe kind of like with the Two Thousand series?
You mean, like this?
No, it was comparative of the two, maybe, in a PDF file? I remember something a little more thorough than this with one of the other series.
In the folder, each individual policy has an update sheet, the old policy and the new policy, and then this as well, and then also a page that says which ones are minor changes or which ones are significant changes.
Okay. I got you. Thank you.
The changes here that I saw were basically in the references. There were very few changes in substance. However, that being said, there are six policies that I noted. Uh, you might want to make a note of these numbers. Three, two, two, eight. Three, three, two, zero. Three, four, one, zero. Three, four, six, zero. Three, five, one, five. And three, six, two, zero.
Three, six, one.
I'm sorry, the last one, three, six, two, zero. Those six, I think, I would ask that you look at the summary of those policies. Four of those refer to regulations to be adopted by the superintendent. And we've not adopted any regulations. However, I have proposed regulations that I can share with the superintendent and the board for your consideration on those. I do recommend thirty-four, sixty. That is something that graduation requirements. We definitely need to do that one so we're in conformity with the current requirements. And thirty-six, twenty, the board has an option on what you want to do about sixth-grade athletics. So look at that one.
Which one, sorry?
Thirty-six, twenty.
Okay.
What we've been doing is prohibiting sixth-grade football, which is required by the state, but we've allowed, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Taylor, Dr. Rice, we've allowed sixth graders to participate in other sports. The option is to eliminate all sports in sixth grade. I don't think we want to do that. I think we want to keep our continuous policy. The state won't let sixth graders play football, but it will let them play other sports, middle school sports. So I, the new policy, the changes in that include that option. So I think we definitely want to keep our current policy on sixth-grade football. I apologize for that. I'll be home for dinner later. Whatever. Okay. But that's it. Other than that, they're really just changing the references at the end, correcting some grammatical errors or changes in legislation. I was very surprised that there weren't any more recommendations for change. And, you know, I would be glad to share with you the administrative procedures if you'd like to review those.
Yes, sir.
All right. If there are no other policy matters to share, then we'll move on to, um, well, if it's okay, I would like to take a quick five-minute recess, and then we'll move on to discussion of the tiered bus routes, okay?
...
... times is two hours and eighteen minutes if we added. If we did the tiered routing and use four buses, that would be cut down to an hour and twenty-four minutes. You can see Nancy Reynolds goes from two forty-four to one thirteen. Sandy Ridge, two oh five to one sixteen. And then all the South District runs. So what it would do is it would cut ride times. It would cut ride times for every elementary school. Yes, they would have to pick up kids earlier. But they would, it wouldn't take them as long to get to school. And same in the afternoon. And then those same buses would turn around after they finished their elementary runs and run a middle and high school run. And that's why we were having to look at changing bell times. So there would be enough time for the buses to make their morning run and then turn around and do the afternoon run. Now, we mentioned this last time and it's worth repeating. We're already doing this in the King District. So this exact same scenario. Papa Springs, uh, King, Mount Olive, and Pinnacle. We're using buses to run those runs. Those same buses are turning around and doing Chestnut Grove or West Stokes runs. So we know this will work. It's working in that district.
But currently, are those elementary schools starting?
Yes, ma'am.
That much earlier? I know we get a list of all the start times and I just couldn't remember how much they varied.
Currently, every one of those King Elementary Schools, students arrive at that elementary school by seven A.M. Now, the school bell time may be a little later. But buses have to get kids to school at King, Mount Olive, Papa Springs, Pinnacle by seven. So they've got enough time to do the Chestnut Grove or the West Stokes run.
For example, uh, the King instructional day begins, King Elementary begins at seven forty. Lawsonville Elementary Instructional Day begins at eight o'clock. So there, there is currently a, a difference.
Tell us the King start date, uh, start time.
King Elementary. Instructional day starts at seven forty. And instructional day ends at two twenty.
So the kids get there at seven?
Mount Olive.
Okay, I thought you just asked the King. I'm sorry.
No, I didn't.
Mount Olive, instructional day starts at seven forty.
Two twenty.
Ends at two twenty. And Pinnacle Instructional Day starts at seven forty as well. Papa Springs Instructional Day starts at seven thirty.
Guys said that all start at seven forty.
And they all end at two twenty.
So what do the kids do between seven and seven forty?
The kids that ride the bus go into the gym or library or somewhere and someone has to watch them. I'm not sure exactly what-
Pre-COVID, they can go to gymnasium, they can do breakfast. Since we've had COVID, you can't put all groups together. Teachers basically, as they get there, students report to their classroom at that time. They do breakfast, they do things of that nature before instructional based on. And hopefully, if COVID, if we can get past COVID, then we will revert like those pre-COVID plans. As you get there early, you will report to them. They have period to get breakfast with the gym where a couple of staff members would flex their day to be there to provide supervision.
So if COVID finally is over, then this would be the regular schedule again. And the people in King would not have to back it up twenty minutes, right?
Well, now, the, the, the West District would remain the same.
Yeah, that's why I don't have any information on that because that didn't change at all.
These schools are doing this all day.
Right.
There they will change. How we manage or how, how we supervise young people in the Hornets could change if COVID doesn't work. But their scheduling will change.
Also, I may not have mentioned, or we may not have mentioned last time, but this also does not affect the E.C. buses. The E.C. buses will continue just as they are now. They, they don't run tiered runs. They won't be running tiered runs. So they're, the timing of those buses will, will stay the same.
Okay.
How does this affect any teacher assistants that are also driving the bus?
We, we have looked at those individual employees. And if we run into a situation, for example, if I work in the cafeteria and also drive a bus, we would work with Ms. Dillon to look at that schedule, to see if it can be amended, to see if it can be altered in such a way that would not put that person into overtime. We would just have to work through those individually. There's not, it's not a lot of them, but there are those folks out there that work into a role, roles that we would have to look at.
I'm thinking about the teacher assistant at an elementary school that drives a bus that is going to drive an elementary route and then go ride, drive a middle and high school. So they're not going to be able to help in their classroom.
Most of those scenarios are E.C.
Yeah, most of our T.A.s ride either drive or service monitors on our E.C. buses that we're not-
And we're not changing.
Sorry, just thinking out loud, um, this district or the North District elementary runs can't follow the same times and schedule as what's working for the West? Because is it the length of the drive, the route?
Bigger area that they're having to cover. Yes, ma'am. It's just square miles, basically. It takes longer to cover the area in the north.
Yes, that's right.
That, that's what it boils down to.
Well, why are you saying that the school, all the elementary schools will start at seven twenty-five then?
I, I'm sorry, what was your question again?
I thought that in some of this paperwork I read where you said that when this is, um, if this is passed, that the elementary school day would start at seven twenty-five.
The ones in the north and the south would start at seven twenty-five to allow the time to rerun the routes for the secondary route.
Yes.
The north and the west?
The north and then the south.
The reason is if they start at seven twenty-five, then they can end at one fifty-five. So then there's time for the bus to take those kids home to get back to North and Piney Grove by eight thirty. If you started Lawsonville later, then you would have to let North and Piney Grove out later. You see what I'm saying? So the, I mean, they would be not ending their day until almost, well, three forty. So we're trying to, trying to split the difference there. To keep the high schools and middle schools from having to be dismissed so much later.
So it's just, when you're saying south, the North District, you're saying this South District?
This second page, yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Germanton, Pine Hall, London, and Walnut Cove.
Those people would have to start at seven twenty-five. Whereas the King people would still start at seven forty, right? Because they've been sharing buses forever with Chestnut Grove.
Correct. They just have shorter routes that allow that.
And if we could do anything to get the start time closer to seven thirty, we would look at doing that.
You mean for this, this?
For North and South, yes, ma'am. We would do everything we could to get it as-
Well, you know, it's just backing a lot of employees up twenty minutes to try to get to work.
Well, to give you an idea, the average West District route is seventy-three miles a day. The average North District route is ninety-six miles a day. The West District route at seventy-three miles a day is two tiers. That's driving seventy-three miles, running an elementary run and a middle school or high school run. The North District route, ninety-six miles, is just one school. So it's just so much bigger in the north and in the south. And then there's so much more density and population in the King area.
It, it would require employees to report early. For example, if Lawsonville started their day instead of starting at eight o'clock, if they started at seven twenty-five or seven thirty, then their teachers, instead of reporting at seven thirty or seven forty-five, would report at seven or seven fifteen. But they would also be ending their day at about two twenty or two thirty.
And that's a full school day, not losing?
That's correct. That's because right now, at Lawsonville, if I teach kindergarten through third, to second grade, I report at seven forty-five and my day ends at three fifteen. Well, if that's backed up by thirty minutes and I come at seven fifteen, now I'm, my day's ending at two thirty, two forty-five. So it'll be reflective. If they come earlier on the front end, they will leave earlier in the afternoon as well.
Well, that sounds good on paper.
Well, in, in full transparency, after this was shared with you at your last meeting, we had a leadership team meeting that same week. And we shared the same presentation with the principals. And we said to them, we want you to hear this from us. This has been shared with the Board of Education. This is just an option, a way for the district to save some money and to improve our efficiency. And if we don't do something, we're going to continue to spend local dollars on transportation every year. A lot of local dollars.
Yeah.
The other thing again is the lack of drivers. And one thing that other districts have done is to mandate that all new classified employees that are hired get their C.D.L. to help with those routes. We have tried to avoid doing that here in Stokes County. But the reality is we have to get kids to school. And right now, we have six routes without drivers. Uh, I believe Mr. Langford has said he expects between four and six retirements this year. That could be ten, twelve vacant routes, the last bus class.
We've got one, um, April the twelfth. We've got five folks signed up for it.
Are those coaches or are those actual route drivers?
Maybe two of them are route drivers. The others are teachers and coaches. We've also got one in June scheduled, uh, another bus class. But it is, it's just getting harder and harder to find drivers. And that's, that's a problem everywhere. It's not just here.
And unfortunately, our efficiency is tied directly to the number of people we transport and the number of buses we use to transport them. So if we can reduce the number of buses we're running and maintain our ridership, we even believe, we feel like, and I, well, we've taught, it's possible that if we shorten ride time, if we go from an hour and a half ride down to a forty-five minute ride, we may actually pick up young people. We may actually have more people that ride our buses, which would in turn help our efficiency even more, which means we would get more money from the state.
The biggest factor of improving your budget rating is adding riders. And that's what the other handout I gave you was, and I'm not going to go over that, but I'd be happy to talk to any of you, uh, at any time about it. But it's just our latest budget rating graph that shows where we fall, Stokes County falls, compared to the other counties in the state. One, the first graph shows the, uh, number of buses per one hundred adjusted students. That's sort of a backwards way of saying the number of students per bus. Uh, our average is around forty-two. If you see a lot of the little dots, every little dot there is a, is a school system. And it looks like there's a, a lot sort of in the two point one to two point one-five buses category, which would, which would be forty-six students per bus. So we're at forty-two, optimum was around forty-six. So that's four more kids per bus. You say, well, that's not that many, but it's seventy-five buses. So we need three hundred more kids to ride the bus. If we got that, we, our budget rating would go up without doing anything. But how do you get parents to want their kids to ride the bus? We feel like if you shorten ride times, that might make it more appealing.
Maybe, I think the earlier part is what's gonna deter some people. I mean, I don't know, maybe some people would like earlier and think, oh, yeah, they can get on and I can leave for work sooner. I don't know, maybe.
Yeah.
Um, the other piece, like we discussed before, is the car riders. You know, the parents that do, that no matter what, they're gonna take their kids to school. So I don't know, you could run into issues there. I don't know, just something to consider. Um, I do have a question about Sandy Ridge, you know, on the pink and blue chart as far as, uh, if you compare it, um, I think I looked over on the other page, like Germanton, as far as, you know, two buses and then you add four buses. And their stop, their first stop is like six thirty-six, six thirty-three, six thirty at Germanton in the blue, the proposed.
Yes.
Well, um, it, you know, for Sandy Ridge, it went from picking up now at six forty-one, six fifty-five, and six forty-nine, and it jumped up a lot earlier, although you have five buses en route. So it should be shorter time spent on the road. So why not have a later pickup actually in turn?
Well, this is just based on what the actual TMS model showed.
Right.
The lady took the kids that are assigned to all of our buses right now,
Uh-huh.
reconfigured them, reassigned them to different buses, and these were the pickup times that it, that it showed that would need to be.
The biggest issue is earlier start time. That's the biggest, biggest factor.
I wanted to ask this.
Yes, ma'am.
Will that mean that Piney Grove and Southeastern will get out later? That won't they get out later? If they're having to wait on the buses? See, Chestnut Grove has always gotten out later than any middle school uh, in several counties because they've always had to share buses with Mount Olive.
I think we looked at pretty much mirroring the time for Piney Grove and Southeastern with Chestnut.
Yeah, it would bring all of our schools much, in much more alignment with the start time and dismissal time.
So they'd, they'd be getting out later, wouldn't they?
Yes, ma'am. They would be starting a little later and getting out a little later.
Because what time does Chestnut Grove start?
Chestnut Grove currently, the instructional day starts at eight twenty-five and instructional day ends at three fifteen.
Then would that be about the same for Piney Grove and Southeastern?
It's going to be very close, yes, ma'am.
Yeah. But see, they've been starting earlier and getting out a lot earlier. Which I thought that was always the optimum for middle school. Uh, when that middle school concept came into play years ago. Chestnut Grove was never able to get that because I always had to share the buses.
Understand.
So they always were in there a whole hour earlier than most middle schools. My husband was administrator in the middle schools and theirs got out a lot earlier, but they started earlier.
And again, when, when Dr. Rice approached us about looking at ways to save the district, e- each year we come, y- we talk about the budget needs that we have across the districts. We simply wanted to give you an idea, a proposal, that we are confident will save our district money. Sixty-five, seventy-five, if the ridership goes up, it could approach a hundred thousand dollars. It, this will save us money. Yes, it will require change. Yes, it will, some people will like it, some people will not. I think in time, it will work just like it does in the West District. I think people will grow accustomed to it and I think things will, will work. But there will be a period of transition if this is something new as the board decides to pursue. We worked with Dr. Rice. We simply wanted to give you the information, let you know that there is an option out there that can save you and the district money and try to answer all the questions and, and just give you the information.
And again, as the board, if you say this is not something that the board wants to pursue, we won't bring another presentation and we will look at other ways to try to save money. And, or cut services, one of the two. Uh, that's the two things. You either make more or spend less. Uh, and so this is one way we can spend less. And so, you know, it, again, if the board says, thank you, but we're not going to do this, we'll move on. Uh, it, it won't hurt our feelings. It, i- it's an option to, that we're bringing to the board.
And, and I've been here fifteen years and this is the first time we've looked at this. And I've, and I thank Dr. Rice for, for wanting us to look at it, just to give you the option.
And it's only on people's minds. They think the more buses you have, the less time it's been on the road. But it seems like with the state, it's the opposite. Uh, that's true. Because they want more people on the bus.
That's right.
And ridership time less.
That's why when Dr. Rice used the example, the last time at your last meeting, a lot of city districts, Ashboro, Mount Airy, small area, small geographic area, run two, three multiple routes and their efficiency is above a hundred. They're, they're making money from the state by running yellow buses, whereas we're losing money. We've got to do something to address our efficiency rating.
Can we, uh, convert to biodiesel and use all the oil from all these cafes around here? Then we might be-
That's not our decision. That, that would be a decision-
We, uh, might smell like french fries, but you know, we might save a lot of fun there.
We, we-
But that's not gonna happen here.
We've not really looked into it seriously. But we have, I've read up on it. It, there's a lot more maintenance costs that might actually off-
Right, right. I'm just checking.
When that bus, when that bus sets for the summer, you better plan to rebuild it. I made bio, so.
Right, right.
Yeah.
One, one thing we would, yes.
Is the, uh, you said the cost savings estimated sixty-six to seventy-five thousand? Is that a conservative estimate?
It depends on what retirement. Right now, retirement is approximately twenty-one point six eight percent. We figured it twenty-two, twenty-three percent. So it could vary. If, if retirement goes up to twenty-three percent, it's going to be closer to sixty-five, sixty-seven thousand dollars. Yes, we fact- Well, we figured it on the number of days they would be driving, plus the holidays.
Two hundred. We did two hundred, yes.
So maybe sixty to seventy thousand less requested in our current expense to offset buses, is what you're saying?
That could be used for computer technicians or a, a, another position of some type or other needs. That's why we wanted to bring it to you. Now, one thing, and Dr. Rice and I have talked about this, not asking for action tonight, but if this is something you decide to pursue, if you'll let us know early enough, we will need to advertise this, communicate this with our staff and our students and our families. Early enough, we're not asking to, to start this any, any time before next school year. If you decided to pursue this, we would recommend that it start in August when school starts back.
And transportation funding is always a year behind. So it'll take a year to realize all of the savings.
And if you want more information, if you want more detail, information, feel free to reach out and we'll, we'll get you whatever information that you need, that you feel like you need to make the best decision you can.
Okay.
And at this point, uh, we don't intend to stick it on another agenda unless as we get into the budget process, you remember where seventy-five thousand dollars could be. And then we will bring it back up again if, if you ask us to, unless you, as a board, comes to us and says, you know what, I would like another piece of information about this. And if you'll let us know that, we'll have that research ready for you at a board meeting.
Do you feel like, um, leadership or, you know, principals are sharing the potential for something like this or not really at this time?
They're probably not looking to rock the boat too much right now until you get further into a discussion. If, if, and if you say, I mean, i- if you ask people, do they want to go to school earlier, chances are the answer is no. Uh, most people don't look to get up earlier. Uh, most people, i- if you give them a choice of sleeping earlier or sleeping late, they'll choose late. Uh, most people don't set alarms earlier on the weekend by the phone. But there's a purpose here that could be met. And, but if you would like for us to do anything with that, I mean, again, i- it's more of a full range picture though of saying, you know, there may be other cuts that we have to do or we could do a bus route. But again, when you're talking seventy-five thousand, you know, that's potentially two teacher assistants. But somebody may say, well, that doesn't affect my school, so I don't want to do it. But again, we're trying to look at a overall big picture of a cost savings number. Uh, again, you, you have the information as a board. It will be a board budget decision that we take to the county commissioners. And it may be a board, it will be a board action based on what they give us coming back down the hill uh, with, that we have to balance in early July. Uh-
One thing to that, Ms. Knight, I have had a few principals tell me that they like the concept. They do not believe there'll be a large impact on their schools. They think, as a matter of fact, I've had one principal say it's a win-win. They've approached it from that standpoint, not talked with all nineteen of them, but have heard from some. It has been shared with all principals and assistant principals. But I don't believe they have actually done formal presentations of their stuff.
I'm not sure exactly when we did it at, at West, you know, when we, I want to say it was around two thousand. I wasn't here, obviously, and they weren't, but there's probably some folks that were around that might could tell you how they, you know, how, how they sort of handled it. But obviously, yes, change is hard. Change is difficult. Nobody likes it.
That's true.
But they get used to it. I mean, obviously, the folks in the King area are okay with it now.
Well, I think I was there when it was changed, so. You know, I was at King intermediate then when they changed it. Um, I did reach out to some principals. So, you know, I encourage board members to do that. Call, call principals up in that area and ask them how they feel about it. I did, and I didn't call every single principal, but I may, you know. Feel like as a board member, sometimes I need to reach out to principals and find out how they feel. And, um, it was very informative. So I do encourage board members to do that. Uh, reach out to your principals and ask them, you know, how they feel. But, uh, I did have some positive comments, I did. Um, but I did want you to know I, you know, I did that. And also, you know how we, as a board, with the new members, when we did the Capitol Outlay, we went around later on to the schools and visited some of the most pressing needs so that you could see firsthand what they were. And Ricky is, always does a good job of, of, uh, taking us around. You know, you've done a lot of work and we appreciate you. That's a lot of work you've had to do on this transportation thing.
Sure.
And it's very informative and so.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Langford.
Thank you.
You know, I've-
Hold on, hold on. Go ahead.
I've sat here doing a little bit of math. I noticed at Lawsonville, we're going to gain an hour and eighteen minutes versus New Way, Old Way, as far as total amount of time the buses are on the road. Uh, the New Way, we're going to save an hour and eighteen minutes a day. At Nancy Reynolds, we're going to save fifty-four minutes a day. But at Sandy Ridge, we're going to lose eight minutes. So I think that's going to be a wash. That's not a big deal because we're still saving two hours and four minutes a day. So, you know, we're looking a, a week, ten hours plus savings, even though we're putting six more buses on the routes. So if you're saving ten hours total ride time.
And that's the thing, the ride time, the kids, you know, obviously, nobody wants a child to be on the bus any longer than they absolutely have to, but.
But that's just in the north area where the ride times are the longest. We're still saving ten hours a week.
Yeah.
And my experience is the buses are there at seven thirty, not seven forty-five. But that's just me. I encourage you to check it out.
Well, that's just what it's got in TMS.
Yeah, okay. So I'm just saying, if, if you want a true reflection.
Oh, I just got a statement. I was letting everybody play out. It's kind of like we did last time. Uh, what we're saving is a million dollars every thirteen years. I mean, that's it in a nutshell, and it could be higher than that. So that's a win. The other thing we need to remember, we've got thirteen employees now that are actually vested in the system, drawing retirement, more loyal, more happy, more willing to come to work every day, more dependable, more reliable. So that is, that is the big thing.
Yes, sir. And you asked me last time, how many? We got twenty-five now, so this would add thirteen more.
So you're increa-, we're increasing the, the full-time family by fifty percent. And it makes it a whole lot easier to go attract that negative six to ten that we're losing when we say, now you're going to have retirement, now you're going to have this, now you're going to have that. Welcome to Stokes County. We love you. Come, come play with us. So it's employee retention.
Right.
But the, the flip side is, and we need to do this, if we are anticipating this, we need to publicize it now to get the buy-in because the million dollars that we're saving is the taxpayers' money and they are the people putting their kids on the buses. So they have some buy-in interest to it. You know, you go to a car lot, you've got your option of buying a Chevrolet or a Lamborghini. If you want the Lamborghini, pull your checkbook out. That's what you're going to pay for. We just need to be full, I encourage this board wholeheartedly, at least schedule two town hall meetings, whether they be virtual, uh, in person, whatever, before we roll it out, one for the north, one for the south, to say, here's what we've done at West, here's what- here's what we're gonna save, here's why we're projecting flipping your whole world upside down when it comes to bus riders, because they're only 50% of the people going to school. I'm all for it, but I'm all for it, and I want everybody to be open eyes as they walk through the door.
That was my little bit of concern, was the transparency, not just to the staff, but the parents to know, you know, this is a potential change. I mean, that's why I asked about staff, and I know nobody wants to say, oh, yeah, sign me up for 45 minutes earlier or whatnot, but still.
Some people may say, sign me up for 45 minutes earlier in the afternoon, I'm at home.
Now, you know, some, I think, teachers that have to drop their kids off at elementary school in this district and then be at work at a high school, you know, I think would appreciate that gap in time, then they're not as rushed. So that's the positive, but, you know, every situation's different.
I'm gonna suggest Ms. Barker, who's done a wonderful job getting her website up to defeat. Great, we start putting stuff out there and actually using it as a marketing tool, saying, here's a proposed, go to this link and fill out this poll, and let's get some instant feedback.
I'm fine with that personally, yeah. The more transparency and the more information is out there.
That's why we were asking if it's something you do want to pursue. Communication is gonna be essential.
Yeah.
Okay, this board member says proceed with information.
Information only, yeah. Next, we have discussion of planning for retiree recognition.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Knight and board. You have in your packet that Mrs. Boljack sent out to you earlier, a history of what we have done for the past nine years. Prior to that, we did recognize retirees, but it was in with one recognition event that included recognizing other groups of employees, which may for a rather long evening sometimes. So we split it out in 2012, and we've gone from different parts of our district to honor our retirees. Then, due to the pandemic, we unfortunately were not able to do that last school year. We would recommend to you that based upon the governor's latest orders and our employees getting vaccinations, many people getting, being able to get the vaccinations if they so choose, and hopefully, things are gonna continue to improve in North Carolina and for all of us. So we are recommending that we do honor our retirees this year and also honor last year's group of retirees. So that would be about 54 retirees we would be honoring. I have spoken with some folks with the city of King, maybe having it at the amphitheater at Central Park, and use the large picnic shelter, have a hot dog supper that our school nutrition department could box up for us. We could do a presentation on the stage at the amphitheater by the Board of Education for all of our 54 retirees. And then have a nice social event afterwards, out in the open space there at the picnic shelter, and give you an opportunity to personally interact with some of these retirees and their families and special guests. So we are proposing to you a date of May 13, from 5:30 until 7:00 p.m., and a rain date of June 3, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. Both of those dates are on a Thursday evening. We, right now, so that especially our new board members are aware of the gifts you provide, you do a $75 gift card to our retirees, and also a personalized resolution that you sign, and that includes their name as well as their number of years with the school system. So that is our proposal to you tonight, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Is there a reason we're doing it at King instead of one of the high schools?
Well, it is time again, Mr. Rogers, to go really to the West District, and we were thinking we could maybe be in a more outside area, but certainly, we could also look at West Stokes or Chestnut Grove or any of those areas over in the King area, if we stick with the rotation that we had been doing.
I'm just thinking, May, June, evening, thunderstorm, wet, soggy.
Yeah, it could very well be.
And we've got cafeterias, I mean, finally, Poplar Springs, excellent school, brand new. Got room to spread out.
Yeah, if we can spread out enough, and, you know, we still, I think, social distancing will still be expected, and wearing of the mask. So that was the only reason we're thinking about an outside area and a rain date. But certainly, if you all feel we can space out enough by going to a school, we can certainly do that.
The only reason I say Poplar Springs is they can open the walls, and you've got cafeteria and gymnasium floor in one big room.
You have probably, if every person brought at least one guest, if you sort of limit the guest list this year, instead of letting them bring as many as they wanted to bring, as we've done in the past, you're looking at probably about 150 guests, give or take, 150 to 175. So you all know more about that floor space and Mr. Goins and Dr. Rice, Dr. Taylor, than I do, if you feel like you can space out enough.
Well, again, any indoor venue is limited to 250 maximum, based on the seating capacity at 30%. I don't know that we have yet done the square footage of the cafegematorium at Poplar Springs to see what that space is for that venue with a stage, gym, cafeteria area. But that would probably be the biggest single level area other than if you tried to have a stage with retirees on the floor with crowds in the stands at a West Stokes. But if everybody is more of a mingling type situation, that would be the largest area. But I've not, we've not looked at that square footage yet. But we could do that tomorrow. I mean, and I'm not against going outside, I'm just. Sure, I mean, that's what we're looking at, again, with graduations. We looked at every year, what happens if it rains, and that's why this year with the limitations, we looked at rain dates for that, instead of just going inside on those dates for graduation. But that was, that was the reasoning behind, but you're exactly right.
You could go ahead and post, you know, the amphitheater, if it gets raining or tents are arranged.
Then we could say possibly, you know, this many guests, if it's outside and if it's raining, will be at the Poplar Springs, and it'll be limited to this many guests. That would be an option as well. And I haven't been at the, by the amphitheater at King in the evenings. I know they've got a pond. Do we have a bug issue?
This is the area you all may remember for those who've gone to the early college graduations. It would be there, so.
Yeah, I'm just not sure about insects in the evenings.
Everybody'd have to bring a chair, too.
She's saying a big, yeah.
No, I said everybody'd have to bring a chair.
I know, but she's saying, when I said insect, she's like, yeah. Nothing says friendship like the smell of deet in the evening.
But we'll be glad to look at Poplar Springs and come back to you, if that's okay, at the next minute, we've got a little time. I just asked the lady at the city of King to hold it for me for a few days. I'm sure she'll work with us on that. Okay, anything else, board? Okay, thank you so much.
Next, we have item F, discussion of marketing our school's update. And I can share as far as, is that the plan, as far as what I've, you know, or we've got to work on so far. I met with Melissa Jessup and Doug Rose, I believe it was maybe last week, Thursday, or? Okay, and we had a brief virtual meeting for about 30 minutes and discussed, you know, some ways to move forward as far as potential costs for addressing some things, like other board members have mentioned, as far as even broadcasting what great things our schools are doing on a couple of billboards around the county, as well as refocusing our Facebook, you know, and checking with Fred to see if we can do a very inexpensive on Facebook where you boost an ad, and you can target certain counties and certain groups through boosting. And it's, again, very minimal cost to get the word out. And that would be like an informative marketing-type video running of Stokes County schools that, you know, would go out on their Facebook page and just try to be seen more with what's going on here. And more information, Melissa or Doug, I welcome you to chime in there. That was just a few things right off the top of my head. And then we're gonna meet again this Thursday, April the 1st, from 1:00 to 2:00, a virtual meeting. And there's been some good information sent to me by Ms. Liker. And, I mean, I'm good if we forward this to everybody, as far as this information regarding some of our student enrollment losses, a breakdown of.
Yes, I'd like that.
Yeah, a breakdown of where, when the students withdraw, you know, where are they going?
Yeah.
Like in 1819, we had 411 that left in the 1819 year. That's just one of the main things I'm seeing here right off. And.
That's very informative.
It can tell you, you know, if they went within North Carolina, out of state, charter schools, you know, where they went and that sort of thing. So, yeah, we can share that information with you all. And going forward, I just wanted to look at how to expand our group and who we would want to involve in the marketing process, because I welcome any, you know, help or feedback as far as which direction to go. And if any, you know, other board member, I guess mainly just two of us, is how we've done it before, if somebody else wanted to join in, you know, I welcome that as well. And I did inquire with Ms. Jessup about that ORED, is that how you say it? ORAD or ORED study, you know, that was done, I believe, several years ago, that kind of projected population declines and then growths. And just to try to see, are we staying along those lines with our enrollment? Or are we off based on that? So considering, considering some of those factors as well.
Ms. Knight, just for information, I have reached out to that office in Raleigh and left two messages.
Okay.
So as soon as we get a call back, latest information, we'll share that with you.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry, just reviewing some notes here. Some of our steps we wanted to do was identify where our student enrollment losses, where they went, what and why, and we started to gather some of that information. Again, finding out if the district can use the Facebook app that allows sponsored ads to attract a wider audience. Also, using some information through the, I think, NC State University Enrollment Projects Report. I guess that's that ORED study. Talking with Ms. Moore about available funding to cover overhead costs for projects like billboards, stipends for employees who would be involved in in-person, to-person calls with families who left the district, you know what I mean? Like a follow-up call to gather more information on why they're, you know, unenrolling or leaving. Outside marketing video, or either inside, like we've mentioned, using students at our high schools that are really savvy with technology and marketing. Or even a contracted marketer group. Reviewing advertising resources on how to rebuild your district enrollment numbers. It's a personalized planning guide, some information that had been sent to Ms. Jessup. And that was a really good start, a good resource to have there at no cost initially with that. So I feel like we're getting things up and going. Any input or suggestions, board, on where to go with the marketing group? And who to involve, and where to seek further information?
Well, I think if we could involve our students in it, it would definitely help. Because people see the students enjoying what they're doing and talking about it. That's gonna reach them a whole lot more than it is some adult or some actor or some.
Right, yeah, involve the students in the marketing aspect of videos and things.
I've been saying for a year, let's get our top technology kids, give them on-the-job training. Use our kids, they're, I mean, they're the ones that's invested in the system. If that doesn't work, then you go outside, but we need to do this on a low budget, because it's a pandemic.
Right.
And we need to do it quickly.
Correct. Anything else, Ms. Nessick or Mr. Robertson, on certain areas to focus or persons to involve?
Well, I think mostly what I thought I was gonna say.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Well, we'll meet again and move forward with some of this and report back, okay? Next, we have discussion of relaunch. Dr. Ray?
Board members, you have in your packet the updated numbers from today. As of tonight, there was one active case, but that has been, one added to that later today. So we have two active cases today after this went into your packet. We still have zero active cases of staff members right now. We have had one staff member who was tested positive in the month of March. They have since recovered, and we have sat at zero since then. So our numbers are very good, both at a district level and at county level. According to the last report on March 24th, there were, we were down to 31 active cases in the county. Earlier in January, of course, that number was much, much higher. And so we're very proud of those trends. The governor's easing restrictions that came out last Tuesday, we will enact those in our building starting April 12th, when we come back from the spring break. The reason for that delay is, one, we wanted to notify you first, notify our staff and families later this week, but also to give our staff a chance to be considered fully vaccinated that wanted to be vaccinated. As you're aware, we had our second vaccination clinic on Friday. Two weeks after that, you're considered fully vaccinated. And so our staff will be fully vaccinated on April 9th. So when we come back on the 12th, they would be considered fully vaccinated at that point. Part of those restrictions, easing the restrictions, is the no more screening questions. And so where we've asked people those three questions every day, are you experiencing symptoms? Have you been around anybody that's tested positive, or have you tested positive? Our people are well aware of those questions. There, we have not had to send anybody home, nobody's brought their kids to school and said, well, yes, and now they get sent home. So in a way, those are waste-of-time questions, because they know the expectations this year. We will still express those expectations on, you know, Sunday night phone calls from, just as reminders, to please don't send your kids to school if any of these things happen. The attestation forms that kids are taking onto the bus, that will end as well. We are still gonna do temperature checks. We do think that that is a positive from this year. Again, we have the thermometers, they're already paid for. But that does offer a sense of a quick quantitative check. Somebody could lie about screening questions, but a temperature's a temperature. And so we would like to continue to do the temperature checks as people enter our buildings or as they get off the buses. Also, a big change is that students may remove masks when outside and consistently maintaining six feet of physical distance at all times. So if kids were to go out to walk around the field at Germantown, or if a class wanted to go sit in the, you know, outdoor pavilion area at South Stokes, and they were, make it ensure six feet of social distancing in an outdoor setting, they can remove their mask. Now, if they're running around on the playground and playing freeze tag, I don't know if they play freeze tag anymore, I'm 50, so they did when I was a kid, you're inside of each other's space on a consistent basis. Those kids would still need to wear masks, but if they're in a way where they are organized with consistent six feet of social distancing, they can remove their mask outdoors. It also has increased the stadium capacity to 50% with the caveat, as long as there's six feet of physical distance between households. So talking to our principals, we're probably gonna stay around that 30%, but our stadiums are big enough to pretty much hold the crowds that come in two games. We just gotta make sure that, you know, if they're coming to a baseball game where there's less bleachers, they bring their chairs and sit in groups six feet apart down the first base, third baseline, so that we're physically, socially distancing apart there. But it has moved to 50% capacity with the caveat that there's six feet of social distancing. Some of that from a managerial standpoint is difficult, because who's in whose house? Uh, if you don't know the families well, but again, we'll communicate that, try to work with people uh, to uphold the governor's orders while letting as many people as possible, uh, come in and support their children. So we're, again, we're working toward that to try to make sure that's happening as well. But those are the main restriction, easing restrictions as they apply to our school. Uh, again, as you know, we brought our kids back last week. Uh, with that, we have had more kids come back to school. Uh, earlier in the year, you know, we were around thirty-five percent of our people had chose Plan C. We're down now to nineteen point six nine percent have chosen Plan C. And my computer just died, but, uh, I'm bringing it back up now. Uh, that is seven percent of our elementary school students have chosen Plan C. So ninety-three percent are back physically. In our middle schools, uh, eighteen percent have chosen Plan C, which means ninety-two percent are back physically, no, eighty-two percent are back physically. Uh, I did my math right in my head. High schools are still a higher number at forty-one percent have chosen Plan C. But again, a big portion of that is the early college where fifty-six percent have chosen Plan C because Forsyth Tech classes are still all remote. And again, there's a, a significant number of students at our other schools that take Forsyth Tech classes. And again, when you have two or three classes that are all remote, it's almost a hardship to come to school for one or two periods. So that, that's expected, but we have had more students come back. There has been a buzz in our buildings in the last week that's not been there in a while and it has been a glorious thing to hear. Uh, I walked into one class last Monday and a teacher said, look, look back over there. And it was two little boys sitting in there in middle school. And they didn't, I'm not as sure they knew I walked in the room because their heads were toward each other and you could just tell they were both just jabber jabbering as fast as they could. And the teacher said, those are best friends who have not seen each other in twelve months, uh, physically. And she said, I'm giving them some time to catch up today, uh, and, and letting them enjoy seeing each other physically. And so, uh, a lot of great news came out of last week. Uh, again, our staff has done a great job with keeping our safety precautions in place of wiping down high-touch areas. I heard talks to several teachers toward the end of last week and at the vaccine clinic that said that they were first week teacher tired all over again, uh, with everybody back and, and all of that. But without it, everyone that told me that said, and it is a hundred percent worth it to have these kids back in the building.
Right.
So we're very proud that, of the work that our staff, uh, the plan that the administrative team has put together, how the staff's carried it out this year, and we're glad to have our students back in the building.
Yes, it is wonderful, thank you.
Uh, Dr. Rice, can the teachers have, um, um, in the classrooms, can they have like a mask or a?
Not in the buildings. Uh, if you are, the, the rules from the governor's orders are if you are in the building, that you're supposed to have your mask on at all time unless you're in a room by yourself. But outdoors now they do have that e- exception. Originally, that was some of the guidance that they could take mask breaks, but it's not in the, in the last several revisions of the governor's orders.
Um, does he have, uh, strict orders that maybe we can see about that, how the children are treated? You know, with the mask and since you can have a mask break, but you can't like in employment. You know, people, their employments are in the business world, of course, they're adults.
Yeah, we're told to go outside or step away or do something.
Yeah, but.
It would be nice for students to have that as well.
You just think about a kid stuck in the classroom and then has to have the mask in the hall and then in the cafeteria to take it off, I guess, to eat. But other than that, what do you do with people that, uh, have health restrictions?
The, the ones with health restrictions, health restrictions have exemptions. And so.
So they bring a note from the doctor or what?
Well, we've not required notes from doctors, we've just required self-reporting of health exemptions. And then they could deal with that. A- and so the principals are aware of that. I was made aware of a situation of a health exemption, uh, that was misapplied. We've rectified that situation today. Uh, and that, uh, again, not to talk too publicly about that situation, but I do, I am aware of one that was misapplied and it's been fixed today.
But you know, there's, uh, when you think about all the students in the whole county, uh, there's, you know, I think parents need to be aware of that if their child does have some type of health restriction that, um, you know, I don't know if they have a, if they even know they have an option. But I thought in the very beginning, when this was started, that we had said, or someone had said, but I probably misunderstood.
Well, there were mask breaks at the beginning, yes ma'am.
I thought you said that.
In the very beginning last summer, they were, there was rules in there about mask breaks and then those went away. Now, again, kids are allowed to have water bottles in their classroom. If I'm actively eating or drinking, I can take them, I'm getting a mask break as I'm getting a breath, then I put it back on. But as far as just taking it off for fifteen minutes, no, that's not allowed. But, you know, there are, if someone were to go to the restroom, you know, obviously if they're in an enclosed space, they can, you know, we're not monitoring looking in the stalls, but, you know, so there, and again, when people go outside, they're, they're, if they're a social distance, they can take mask break then as well. And when, again, at cafeteria times when they're eating, uh, there are times when people will have it off during the day. They won't be wearing it for a straight seven and a half hours. And I get, I get it, it's, it's difficult at times, uh, there, there's no doubt about it. Uh, but those are the, the rules that we're expected to follow and we're trying to enforce that. Uh, unless, a- and again, we're working with families with this. Now, if somebody's just refusing and they say, I don't have a health reason, but I'm not going to wear a mask, then we don't, well, then there's Plan C for you. But if there's health reasons, we honor those.
Are you asking the teachers to be very strict on students that are not compliant?
W- we're asking people to be compliant and follow the rules. And again, there are some people with more health risk than others as teachers and they may be more vigilant in their classrooms based on their personal health situations. And so, you know, just like every school rule, I can't say that every teacher enforces it the same level of every day. But again, if a teacher has significant health or has their, and their family have healthcare risk, they're probably more vigilant about the mask than somebody that does not. But those are the rules and expectations for everyone.
From the governor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, I know we're all excited to have our students back. Next we have partnership with Wake Forest University School of Medicine and Athletic Training.
Board members, approximately two weeks ago, we started conversations or renewed conversations with Mr. Rogers, as most of you know, his daughter Nicole is first year medical student or second?
First year.
First year medical student. And as Dr. Rice mentioned earlier, these students have limited opportunities this year to get or to obtain the number of volunteer hours that they need. So when they were made aware of some needs that we have, specifically in the area of athletic training, uh, that, that nature, they volunteered, no pun intended, to volunteer at, starting with football. I have taught with Mr. Johnson, he has given us the green light to receive or what we need to ask for from Wake Forest regarding background checks. So they are working on that right now. Um, communicated with Ms. Rose multiple times, Ms. Rose, Ms. Rogers, Lord, I just looked at Doug out of the corner of my eye. Ms. Rogers.
Wrong call.
Yes, several times on Friday. Um, she is indicated there are maybe double digit, maybe eight, it's eight or ten possibly.
When she first proposed it and, and we can't call it a partnership yet until Wake Forest weighs in on it. Right now, it is a collaboration between med school student volunteers and Stokes County schools. And these are first and second year med schools. So they've, they've been in the hospital setting for two years now, seeing patients, going through clinicals, taking neurology exams and everything else. So these are not just first year entrants. But so within the first fifteen minutes of her putting it out there to the group, she had twelve responses. I would love to. Uh, they're on the spring break right now, she's got four queued up, I think. And I, I stepped out and I put her in touch with you, Dr. Doug. And I think she had four already volunteering for next week when they come back from spring break.
So we're, we're working on getting them some badges, credentials. And, uh, we will ask our athletic directors to work out, reach out, excuse me, and coordinate and communicate with teams if it's an away game. Nicole is working on getting a letter from Wake Forest that will indicate who has gone through the background check. So correct my language, not a full partnership as of yet, it's a collaboration, as Mr. Rogers said. But we are getting closer every day to putting this in place.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to have some volunteers on the sidelines either way.
Yeah.
Working on their hours and this is in addition to the first responders.
That's correct.
First responders require two online or in-person training events.
One-on-one and one in-person, I think, I'll have to go back and look.
Completion of required training, that's what I know. So these, these students will not have required, completed the required training, but they are two years away from writing prescriptions.
Correct.
So.
And we are starting with football primarily, but I have made the offer that if they are interested in working, partnering, if you will, volunteering with other sports, we do have, we'll have baseball, wrestling, track. There will be other opportunities for them
Right.
to obtain these hours if they are interested in working with us.
I know two of them are athletic trainers that have gone back to med school. Three of them worked with my daughter in concussion research, so it's a win-win for us at zero cost.
It sounds like a wonderful opportunity for us to be on the receiving end there and, uh.
And them also.
Experience for those folks, yes, definitely, thank you. Any other concerns or comments regarding that board? I think it's a great thing.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, Mr. Rogers, thank you, sir. Mm-hmm. All right. So that concludes our discussion items. We have next our action agenda with approval of the personnel and coaching reports. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Who was that, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mike. All those in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
Any opposed? Next we have the fund balance, which were the capital requests that kind of held over from twenty twenty-one, correct? Of the, uh, one hundred forty-four thousand five hundred. Um, is there a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to utilize the leftover monies expenditures from the previous year's budget to address immediate needs this year.
Well, I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Messick, all those in favor?
Uh.
Uh, any opposed? Next we have information and announcement.
Board, a few things to share with you, please take note of the Camp London schedule. That is scheduled for this Thursday, April the first. It is being scaled back this year because of COVID, but you have the itinerary there. You also see, of course, Good Friday is scheduled for this week and then spring break is next week. And then early college celebrates Good Friday as well. We also, we were asked to include the graduation dates. At, on this information sheet, you see those at the bottom. That's broken out there, you have some fundraising information for your information. We also have some items that have been placed on GovDeals, so that's there. And one additional item that's not in your packet, and Mr. Sands may want to add to this. We are scheduled for a federal program review or a federal program monitoring visit that will be done, conducted virtually, correct, Mr. Sands? And that is scheduled for the week after spring break, correct? So we want to make you aware of that.
Federal what? I didn't get it written.
It's a federal program monitoring visit.
And that information's in our package.
We did give you some information on that. Sorry, we did give you some information on that and once they are completed that report, we will give you an update on that as to what they found, which I fully expect is going to be that we're in a hundred percent.
Oh.
Lots.
And what was the date for the, um, thing at Wanneco?
The Camp Lon-
Camp London?
This Thursday?
Thursday, April the first. That's all that I have, unless you have any questions.
No, sir, then I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second?
Second?
Second, all right, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you.